I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 20, 2019 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Mrs. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mumgarn. Colton. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got three presentations tonight. First one's probably the most special one. I'd like to start with that. Chief Bose, would you join me? We have two new firefighters that will be swearing in. I'd like Chief to introduce them and then we'll do the swearing in. Chief?
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I say something similar to this every time, but this really is a special, exciting, fun event for us because we're swearing in two new firefighters. They are starting their careers with the Papillion Fire Department, and we fully expect them to be with us 20, 25, 30 years. And that's just a, knowing the road ahead of them and what a great road that is makes it a very exciting evening for us. So I'd like to introduce them at this time. Stephanie Ferguson. Stephanie comes to us from the northwest Omaha area. She is a graduate of Creighton University's Emergency Medical Services Program. She's been a paramedic for 13 years, right out of eighth grade, really.[108.57][108.57](Laughter). She has, she's been a flight medic down in the Kansas City area and has worked in the private ambulance industry and more recently in children's intensive care unit, taking care of the pediatric patients. So has a lot of great paramedic experience and now she's learning the fire world. We're very happy to have her. And because I don't even try to introduce family members who are here, I've asked Stephanie and then Colton to tell us who's here. And if you want to name everybody, you can or just?
I'll just keep it simple. My mom and dad, Kathy and Doug Ferguson, and lots of family and friends.[145.12][145.12](Laughter).
That way, nobody is slighted at all. Thank you, Stephanie. And Colton Board. Stay up here.[153.01][153.01](Laughter). Colton was raised, again, in northwest Omaha. What a coincidence. He took his paramedic training at Metro Community College. He has three years' experience as a paramedic in the private ambulance industry and then more recently as a paramedic in the Overland Park, Kansas Fire Department. Wanted to be near family, came back up this way and tested with us and did well, and now he is on the Papillion Fire Department. We're very excited to have him as well. So Colton, who's here for your side of things?
I got my mom and dad, Jeff and Rhonda, my grandpa Ron, my grandma Peggy, and then my brother and girlfriend are here as well.
Very good. Does your brother have a name?
Keegan.[197.51][197.51](Laughter).
And Janine?
Oh, and my Aunt Janine's here as well.[203.12][203.12](Laughter).
That's why I don't do it because I'm sure enough going to leave somebody out. So, Mayor, if you'd swear them in.
Step right up that way. If you'd raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, Colton Board.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of a firefighter.
Perform the duties of a firefighter.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Or am I a member of.
Or am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[304.73][304.73](Applause).
And one of the special honors we have in the fire and law enforcement world is pinning the badge on. Colton's mom is going to pin his badge, and Nolan Paulson, who is the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department Fire Chief, is with us tonight, is going to pin Stephanie's badge on.
Congratulations and welcome to Papillion. Next, Andrew Rainbow, Sarpy County Economic Development. Give us a second quarterly annual report. I think I mention it each time, but we do have a lot of people here and people watch this, so I think it's a good education. If somebody's sitting down in Florida and they're just thinking they need to relocate a site and they're looking in Nebraska, they may just look at the Omaha area and to them it's just a big dot on the map and that whole thing is Omaha. In reality, that dot is about eight counties, 33 communities, and two states, the metro area. And so from an economic development perspective, the Omaha Chamber of Commerce has an umbrella organization that thinks of economic development over that whole bubble. So we don't get into jurisdictional wars. It's just where does it make the most sense to go? And once they start honing in on which county it may make sense to locate in, each county has an economic development corporation that's on that board, and Andrew's the director of Sarpy County. So we've got a really good relationship. We've got really good economic development, and Andrew's here to give us a second quarter report on Sarpy County.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor. Again, Andrew Rainbow, Executive Director, Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. The second quarter of 2019 was kind of a continuation of the first quarter, so I might kind of lump them together into a kind of a half-year update here. I handed out earlier some information that is kind of our regular packet that has economic indicators as well as kind of what we call our Sarpy County EDC scorecard. I'll start with the economic indicators. Excuse me. And I'll start by saying broadly, when compared to this quarter last year and the first half of last year, 2019 is off to a slower start than 2018. That's not to say it's not still a very good year. 2018 was just a really great year. And so we're still on quite a strong trajectory, and in some areas, most of that slowdown is kind of in the housing, housing market, I would say. So, but I'll start off with building permit valuations, which as we always say is a proxy for the kind of a capital investment overall. In the second quarter, you can see across the county, we were down quite a bit, almost half of what we were last year. A large part of that is in Papillion, but that is not reflective of the Papillion market. It's just reflective of huge investments coming in in big chunks. And so when this, when we took this, I think there's still some outstanding large permits that are going to come in this year, so I fully expect Papillion to be right back up there when the year is done. I think just at this point in time, that was, that was down a little bit. You can see, as I mentioned, that was the first second quarter, but I'm going to jump ahead so we can kind of look at the year as a whole. And I'll talk about, I mentioned the housing market. I mentioned single-family housing permits. Across the county, we are down a little over 100 permits as compared to last year, and you can see Papillion still doing quite well. It just had a whole lot last year. Some of that might be attributable to weather as well. We had a beautiful first quarter of 2018 and a terrible first quarter of 2019, so hard to compare the two. Multifamily housing permits are down just a little bit. You can see Papillion is in there with 36 permits. I believe those are, I may be wrong, but I believe those are the ones out on 132nd Street by Prairie Queen. On the single-family subdivisions platted, so by number of lots, you can tell last year we had an amazing 812 lots across the county by this point in time, and this year we're at 438. Again, still a strong number. I think that's also reflective of we're eating up large chunks of land at a time. And so we're a small county. We have a limited amount that we can develop until we open up that southern ridge. And so at this point, I think land is getting very expensive and it's getting harder to find land that you can build good housing on. So overall, I'll skip then to my, I'll move then to my report card that we handed out here with our goals and objectives. I'll start at the top with landed projects. So far this year, we've landed three projects. We know of at least two more that will land before the year is out. We're just not exactly sure when we'll officially land those. And so that's, so far is equated to about $7.7 million of capital investment and 12 jobs, well, 12 jobs in the second quarter, I should say. And if I'm, if I remember correctly, our other projects were strictly capital investment, so that, if I'm, nope. Yeah, that's right. So that is a retention project, so we had 40 jobs retained. The project that we landed in the second quarter was a smaller project, but not less important than many of our other projects that we land. It was Redberry Innovations down in Springfield, which is a kind of a very cool, young, I wouldn't call them software development, to be honest, I don't totally understand everything that they do, but they contract with, with the government and they also contract with businesses and do a lot of, I guess, security and technology. So that's about all I know, but it's a great project to have, especially out here in western Sarpy County. Moving on to our project pipeline, we've had, so far this year, we had, in the second quarter, we opened seven opportunities. Six of those are new to market. One of those was a retention project. Those projects that we have opened, we had three warehouse distribution and two office service projects. So far this year, we've had 10 new, sorry, 10 manufacturing projects, which is kind of a reversal of what we've seen in recent years, where we've seen a lot of warehouse distribution and not as much manufacturing. We did have one project visit in the second quarter, and we've had four year-to-date. I know we've got one scheduled for next week and we had one the week before, so we had a bit of a lull in the summertime, I'd say, overall, and it's picked back up in the last three or four weeks. And then the last thing that we measure there is business interactions, and those are kind of all the other things we do besides work on just projects. And you can see we've had, we've made 21 BRE calls so far this year. Our goal is 50. And I know Josh Sharvat, who hopefully most of you have met and has had a chance, and he's been out here to present sometimes, he's kind of our main BRE guy, so going out there and meeting with existing businesses, making sure we're meeting those, their needs and getting their feedback. And so with that, I'll pause and ask for any questions or comments.
Any questions, Andrew? Appreciate the partnership. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Judge O'Neill. People are aware 2020 is Papillion's 150th anniversary, and a number of people have been talking about we should do something, and instead of just talking about it, Bob grabbed it and started running with it. So there's now an official board in place, an organization put in place. Laura Schwartz, who is here with the foundation, is doing a lot of work and she's on the board, but Bob is the president of the board and here to give us an update.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to speak about the Papillion 150 celebration. As the mayor just indicated, in 2020, Papillion will celebrate its 150th birthday of its founding. The genesis of this celebration resulted from some conversations with Mayor Black and Margaret Wyatt and Laura Schwartz of the Papillion Community Foundation. The mayor was enthusiastic about the idea of a year-long celebration, and he was the one who came up with the idea that we needed to have at least one event commemorating our birthday in each month of 2020. Some of those events will be our traditional events like Papillion Days and Winter Wonderland only with 100 and Papillion 150 theme, but there will also be new events and events that are going to be the same as they've been in the past, only with that 150 theme. Let me talk about a couple of those that are noteworthy. We'll have a children's play tracing Papillion history from the Papillion La Vista Arts Network that will happen during 2020. The Papillion Historical Society will host their traditional Gingerbread House event during the Christmas season, only the buildings will be Papillion Historical Buildings to commemorate the 150th. The first task was to develop a logo and motto for the celebration. Kid Luck Glove with local offices here in Papillion developed a logo after a group meeting of interested community members, and we brainstormed and came up with ideas. Out of that process, Kid Glove developed the logo and motto that we have adopted. The logo and motto, honoring our journey, celebrating our wings, incorporates the importance of our community's history and also the progress and continued growth that we continue to celebrate here in Papillion. From that initial group, we formed a steering committee to oversee the planning and form committees. We have an executive committee with me as the chair, Superintendent Andy Rickley of the Papillion La Vista Community Schools as the vice chair, and Brad Eckhoff of Pinnacle Bank as the treasurer, with Laura Schwartz of the foundation as our secretary. We've also adopted a number of committees. There's a finance and fundraising committee. There is a communication marketing committee, a service committee, historical committee, educational engagement to work with the schools and events committees. All the committees are actively engaged and we're in the process of actively seeking sponsors for funding. We are still looking for individuals, churches, and community organizations to get involved. One of our signature projects will be a public art project with butterfly benches with artwork designed by area artists. This has been a project in conjunction with Papillion Arts Council. We have 20 of those benches sold, approximately 28 committed with a hope of at least 30 with a maximum of 40 benches, and I think we'll get, Laura and I were just talking, and I think we'll get at least to 35 would be my guess, and, which I think is quite extraordinary. There was a preview event on August 5 at the headquarters for Cobalt. There were many beautiful designs available, but we had a very successful event with several more benches being sold. Another signature project is the Butterfly Effect Project. Teaming with the national organization, the first of the Butterfly Effect murals is, was completed on the site of Brownies prior to Papillion Days, and many of you may have seen that, maybe actually had pictures taken with that. There will be 12 more to come during 2020. We reached the $1,000 donation limit within 30 days as required by the organization for the first mural, and I'd like to credit the Bianchi family for much of the impetus to this project because they were sort of the persons who started that all out. The Papillion La Vista Media Academy will produce two documentaries. One, a history of the city of Papillion up to the 150th birthday, and the other will cover the celebrations of 2020. Students of both of our high schools will be producing these documentaries, and if you've ever seen anything coming out of Papillion La Vista Media, they do an extraordinary job for high school kids. It's just quite professional, and Becky Hope, their teacher, is just amazing. Our next group meeting will, large group meeting will be on August 27 at the Papillion La Vista Community Schools tech conference room. There is a temporary webpage up and running. The permanent site is under construction and we hope to be functional very soon. The address is papillion150.com, and we particularly want to thank the city for their participation in funding that project. We would not have made this much progress without the wondrous Laura Schwartz. She is an amazing dynamo, and we just have made incredible progress as a result. Our kickoff event for the Papillion 150 will be part of this year's Winter Wonderland in, after Thanksgiving. Again, I want to thank you for the time that, to listen to this, I think, exciting stuff, and we'd hope that all of you would volunteer for some part of the celebration. Are there any questions?
I just want to thank you for stepping up. Thank Laura for all of the work and encourage anybody, council or anybody that's watching or listening, if you're part of a Papillion civic organization or not-for-profit that's not involved, encourage them to get plugged in because I think it's really going to be a benefit to the not-for-profits. I think one of the hopes is during the year, if they're involved, awareness of those organizations rises. Hopefully more people then start understanding their mission. It helps their own recruitment, and we finish 2020, and it wasn't just a good celebration, but every one of our civic organizations is revived with new membership and a new vision. So, thank you.
And we're hoping to have some kind of voluntism, volunteerism event in order to be able to recruit new people for our community organizations as part of the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yep.
Can you turn on your mic from Mr. Glover?
You have mentioned the churches and getting the churches involved. How are you doing that or how are you wanting?
We're not very organized at that yet. That's one of the things we need to be working on. Our hope is to get, there's been some discussion among some of the churches about having a joint church service at some time during 2020. You know, we have a number of historical churches that go back almost to the beginning of the community and before. That would be St. Paul's United Methodist, Trinity Lutheran, First Lutheran, and St. Columcille are kind of the heritage churches. So we're also working, we'll be working with them to try to come up with some kind of programming that would be appropriate since they are an integral part of our history and our presence.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines. Second by Councilman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is administrator's report. Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought maybe I was going to slip by without that. So, a couple of updates for the council. Mayor Black and I have been working together relative to our ZIP code issue. In case you're not aware, 96% of the residential and business addresses with our last annexation were not 68046. So we're going to reach out to the Central Plains District Manager of the United States Post Office, asking for a ZIP code boundary review to take a look at not only our city limits but our ETJ to see if we can get some commonality because those ZIP codes and even names of cities are incorrect as well. And so we're having a little problem collecting sales tax appropriately and have been working with the Nebraska Department of Revenue to correct that. So we hope to hear from them within 60 days, and we'll have that out sometime by the end of this week, I would expect. Also, just a reminder to council members that we do have our ward redistricting meetings on Tuesday, September 3 before the council meeting. One group is meeting at 5:00 and the other at 6:00, and I can certainly have Kendra send you out a reminder if you would like. Additionally, the league legislative meetings start this Friday, so I'll be attending, taking a look at what issues from last year we need to follow up on. And again, if you have any legislative ideas, please let Mayor Black or I know, and we'll certainly take a look at those. And then lastly, the annual league conference is scheduled for September 18 through the 20th at the Cornhusker in Lincoln, and Mayor Black and I will be presenting along with a couple of other municipalities on community and economic development, strategies, funding, and success stories. And I'm hopeful Mayor Black will do all the talking. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, item D1, Ordinance 1853. An ordinance approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R3 Urban Family Residential for the property legally described as attractive land located in the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 2 Township 13 North, Range 12 East. Excluding right-of-way, generally located on the northeast corner of South 80th Street and Cape Hart Road, the applicant is Shadow Lake 2 LLC, Shadow Lake 2 Phase 2. Sir, council member that introduced?
Introduced.
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item E1, Ordinance 1850. An ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. This is the current year budget. This is a public hearing, and I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1851. An ordinance to adopt the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget, the next year's budget. Again, a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Reminder to council, if you've got any questions from your budget reviews before next council meeting, when we have discussion, be sure to reach out to Ms. Myers and we can make sure you got those questions answered so then we need, we have discussion and dialogue. You can be informed. Item F1, Resolution R190158, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to adopt a growth management plan, which plan shall be used for development of the master plan for the Sarpy County and city's wastewater agency. The applicant is the city of Papillion. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190158? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution R190159. This is also a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to prove the city's future growth and development areas within Sarpy County and Nebraska map to effectuate a request to the Sarpy County Board of Commissioners to update the 2016 Future Growth and Development Areas map pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 2336113. The applicant is the city of Papillion. This is the 2019 Future Growth and Development Areas map. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190159?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R190161, also a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to prove a preliminary plat for the property legally described as a replating of lots 1 and 2, Shiwi Farms Replat 2 and Outlot D, Shiwi Farms. Generally located on the northwest corner of South 120th Street and Highway 370, the applicant is Shiwi Farms Generations. Open the public hearing. Proponents?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Patrick Sullivan, 1246 Golden Gate Drive, representing the applicant, as well as I have Pat Hillier here. He is with Lampard Nielsen and is the engineer on the project. We are here to answer any questions, well, we may answer any questions that you have, and I just wanted to welcome Mr. Thielen to the city. You landed in a great spot.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Well, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190161? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any council discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, sir. Motion's approved. Item F4, Resolution R190165. A resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the North Shore subdivision agreement. Sir, motion to approve Resolution R190165? Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is committee reports. I think the only one that's met in the last couple of weeks is the Ad-Hoc Committee for Audit. Have a report out on, on that meeting? Mr. Mumgarn.
Yeah, the Audit Committee met tonight and reviewed the proposed audit plan and engagement letter by the same firm that's been conducting our audits in the past years. The committee has recommended approval of that engagement letter, which will then come to the city council in the near future. We also reviewed the, got an update on the cash procedures policies that are being followed by the departments. We were told that the procedures that are being followed by 14 of the 17 places, city operations that handle cash were reviewed by the Finance Department. There's still a couple of those left to go, but that review found one discrepancy in the reconciliation process that was being used by the building department didn't match well with the finance department processes. So that reconciliation process was then upgraded. There was some increased formalization that they put into some of the processes, cash handling processes in some places. Beyond that, there were no defects, no other defects in the procedures that were found, and so we were very confident that the cash handling processes being followed within the city of Papillion is appropriate and not of any concern.
Thank you very much, and I know transparency and controls and integrity are always a question people have when it comes to government, so just a good point of education. We have an audit committee that's made up of four city council members. They review these types of things, they review the audits, they dig in a little bit deeper. And what we do to make sure that there's different sets of eyes on it, as well as some consistency, we change the makeup of that committee every single year, but what I do is two of the members, I have carryover to the next year, so we have consistency, but then two of the members are replaced with new members, so we actually get a new set of eyes. So I think that would say, what, every three years? Probably every city council member has a chance to sit on the audit committee, and it's a different mix every single year. So I think it's a really good check and balance, so thank you, Mr. Mungard, for sharing that this year. I don't think any other committees have met. Do we have any comments from the floor? Seeing no comments from the floor, any comments from council? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Number of us attended a groundbreaking at St. Columcille. Mr. Ingberg was there, and that was a good celebration, they had a really good turnout. Judge O'Neal mentioned it, St. Columcille's only about eight years younger than the city of Papillion, and so there's actually some discussion how much we've grown together and kind of mirrored, and with the growth, we're doing a community center, they're doing a parish center, and just talked about the good cooperation we've got. Also, thank you for the council members and the staff that attended the mission statement working sessions, we'll be assimilating all of that information and making some proposals. The final work product will come to the council, so thank you for your work there. Also, thank you to the council members that participated in the comprehensive plan open house. I think most of the night there were residents coming through, and actually, right at the beginning, the council chambers were pretty full, so I think we had a good turnout there. Mr. Ingberg, myself, a lot of staff, attended a session from Facebook on how to use their tools in relation to local government. They've got some very specific municipal tools. Some of that is just general communication, but some is actually, we get into disaster situations, emergency communications, they've actually got some tools we can be leveraging, so that was a good training they did. And we're benefiting from that, I think we'll see more and more of that, since they have their data center in Papillion, they identified a Papillion, they're bringing in national-level speakers to Papillion to put on these training sessions. They're doing another one in a couple of weeks for businesses via, through the Sarpy Chamber, so it's nice that they're doing that and reinvesting back in the community. Also, Mr. Glover and I were at the Lions Club, gave an update on things going on in Papillion there, and then this morning, I know Mr. Glover, Mr. Mungard, and a number of staff were at the Sarpy County Economic Development meeting, we were getting a general update. Most of the topic, it was a little bit of an update on what's going west in the Gretna jurisdiction. It seems like each time a community is highlighted, Gretna was this time, there was a big update on the sewer south of the ridgeline. A lot from a county perspective on roads, gel, and mental health was kind of the main, and then the Omaha Chamber talked about the incentives program that the legislature may or may not be working on, and gave an update on that. I think that's major updates, other than the chamber's got two ribbon cuttings coming up, August 21st, Young Chiropractic, and on August 30th, A Place at Home, both in Papillion. And a reminder, if you want to go to the league conference in September, or you're just curious what the agenda is, let Kendra know, and that's September 18th to the 20th. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure everyone's probably heard by now, a little 10-year-old girl was struck by a motor vehicle in downtown Papillion today, I believe it was, and I'm told she's in critical condition. I would just encourage everyone to include her and her family in your prayers, she's going to need it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Please vote. Don't vote yet. I forgot a student.
No, she's a college student.
Ah, I was going to call somebody out.
Well, she's my, she's my student. She's a student.
Come up and introduce yourself. Usually I have the students do it, but now...
Oh, sorry, well, thank you for the effort. I'm Alexis, I'm the rec intern, and I'll also be going on part-time to work for them at the new landing.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
University of Missouri. Go Tigers.
Welcome. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote.
880 yes.
We are adjourned.